Okay, guys, well, it is seven o'clock. So I'm gonna go ahead and call our regular meeting for June 11th, 2020 at seven o'clock to order. First thing on the agenda is to call to order, and I will defer to Commissioner Headland to lead us in indication.
I think it might be appropriate just to end on the side of all the other stuff that's going on until we bring it out. Lord, we've come through these tough times, and you've brought the Lord. You just have asked that you bring us together as a nation to get through this so that we become a better country and better people as we grow. Sometimes it takes more tragedies for creation. We love you. We appreciate what you do. We ask that you do the same.
Amen. Amen. You're gonna just get... Well, two, no, it's just that background.
Well, if you are, I'll line.
I got you. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So does it.
All right, we've got Commissioner Breen and Commissioner Wiggins for the second... I mean, sorry, Commissioner Headland, my bad. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
No.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is our public hearings. We have three. And before we get into the bare knuckles of the public hearings, if there's anyone that has dialed in or is on video conference that would like to speak, as we open these up, we ask that you state your name, address, before talking. So the first public hearing scheduled for tonight is A, which is text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, Section 10.1-37A, outdoor storage; 10.1-37C, outdoor storage standards, Article 3, definitions, and Table 8.1, table of uses. This public hearing is now open. Do we have any commentary to fill? Do we have Bob or anyone that needs to give me kind of a brief summary before we get started?
Sure, so Mr. Clark is on the line. Here with me one second. Bob, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay. Lord, if you'd like to provide any additional information regarding this public hearing.
This particular request was submitted by the state... Can you read me a thing?
We can use you.
Okay. In response to looking at the industrial development in town and the limitations that were there for business to new businesses for the effect of a finite house to experience or social retirement business, they're currently provided by the paramount regulations that are provided by the fire board to recommend the range of the ordinance. Also, Richard Duncan, who put on an element, has been kind of a part from this and supports this with the standard that we apply in terms of buffering and other types of standards that do provide an opportunity for using a lot of storage and...
Any other additional comments, Bob?
I'm doing that bit.
All right, just to provide some clarifying information, I know that was... Bob cut it in and out, just wanted to reiterate. Essentially, this modification is trying to allow how... So, you know, we're not gonna say that somebody can just, you know, build a large storage facility, outdoor storage, and, you know, store a bunch of those or anything of that nature, but the intent of this modification is to allow uses that are ancillary to the primary use. So, for example, you know, faith Baptist needs a lot of chairs, and so if they needed an outdoor facility to maybe store those chairs, but, you know, the primary use was to use them during their church services, then they would be able to do that. Similarly, like the town's gonna build a public works facility, if we need to store certain things, you know, shed outside or something of that nature, but if those things were associated with a primary use that was authorized in zoning, then that would be permitted. So hopefully that clears things up.
It does, indeed. All right, I'll go ahead and entertain any comments from the public.
All right, so Ms. Hurd, Ms. Clark, did you have any responses?
Yes, we did have...
We did have... We have several people that were on the call, so what I'll do is all authority, one of those individuals an opportunity to speak, and I'll just call you by the last four digits of your phone number. So we do have a phone number ending in 3763. Would you like to speak during this public hearing? All right, no comments there. We do have another phone number ending in 1679. Would that individual like to speak during this public hearing?
No.
All right, that's a no. The next phone number is phone number ending in 2528. Would that individual like to speak during this public hearing?
Not currently, but we'll...
Okay, sounds good, thank you. And then we have the next caller, that's Ms. Klinger. Just wanted to ask Ms. Klinger if she wanted to have any comments. That's our planning committee officer.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you. We have two more callers. The next is ending in 5005. Would that person like to speak? All right, and then our last caller is in... Ending in 4251. Would that individual like to speak? That's everybody that's joining us individually, Mr. Clark.
Okay, hearing no comments, I'll go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:07. Moving along into item B, which is rezoning application, CMA-200327, SFR-3CIB... Oh, wow. ...to individual property located on Bull Pack Lane, submitted by Eddie Keever and F.C. Winston. This hearing is now open to the public, and I'll defer to Mr. Cordero and Mr. Clark to come on and give a summary, and then I'll defer to Mr. Cordero to go through the callers on the phone.
And thank you. What I'll do is I'll actually ask Ms. Klinger if she wants to provide an update at this time. Ms. Klinger?
I was... So, the... Mr. Keever, Mr. Keever, Youngsville in 2012, he purchased a subject property, which was part of his current occupation, as it was then mixed use at the time, and he was not aware that the zoning changed when the first bill was adopted. He never received an audit, and so he was requested to amend the... So he's gonna continue to grow. This cemetery, while excluded, is... Will not be deferred, will not be further set up.
Any other additional comments?
And the advocate and his representative, this neighborhood meeting, power conference in April, as required, no one... No one's... But they did receive a petition prior to the meeting that was scheduled. And this could receive... The planning board did recommend the people at their main meeting.
Thank you. To clarify Ms. Klinger's comments, essentially, when we adopted our new development ordinance, the zoning for this property that's adjacent to his current business changed. He's just seeking to expand his business with the same similar operations. So, again, this is to be recommended for approval both by staff and the planning board.
All right.
Would you like to call the roll, Mr. Red?
Absolutely would.
All right. So we'll just go through the callers again. We have a caller ending in 3763. All right, we have a caller ending in 1679.
I don't have this, but the feedback is terrible.
Got it, thank you, Carrie. Caller ending in 2528.
Not currently.
Okay, and caller ending in 5005. All right, and then our caller ending in 4251.
I can barely understand what's happening. There's so much we have on the call.
Got it, thank you. He said, "They hear a lot of feedback on the call."
Feedback, okay. Okay, and Ms. Hurd, we didn't have any written documentation, any comments from the public on this one as well? Okay, all right, we're hearing no comments from the public. I will go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:11. And we'll move forward into item C, annexation petition, Albemarle Properties LLC, Lot 2, of Youngsville Commerce Center. Ms. Klinger, Mr. Clark, do we have a brief summary that either of you individuals would like to give? Want to go ahead and roll call?
Yes. Here with me one moment. I think I actually had Ms. Klinger on mute, so I've unmuted you here. And if you have any additional comments on the Albemarle Properties item?
This is just probably... This is like a master builder, but it's already built, and we have requested a bit of annexation petition for it last year before it started, but now they've done that.
Terry, do you think by chance that they're getting feedback from the speaker? If these are more topical, sensible?
They might be. If you want, we can take a quick recess, actually, and we can switch over to the other ones. I'll leave that up to you.
Let's get through this one, just to be on the safe side.
Sure.
And then, because, you know, people are in attendance, I'm having difficulty on the top hearing, and I'm in the room. I can't imagine what they may be experiencing on the call, so... So obviously, this hearing is open. Commentary, Mr. Cordero, I'll let you roll call on if you have any comments.
Sure, and I'll ask, Mr. Clark, do you have any additional comments on this item? Recede.
Yes, can you hear now? Not very well, but maybe if you can hear me, this again is a voluntary petition, correct? The property court.
Got it, thank you. All right, I'll call through the callers that we have here, caller ending in 1679. All right, next caller is caller ending in 2528.
Not currently.
Okay, thank you. Next is our caller ending in 33... Sorry, that's Ms. Klinger. I'll move on to the next one. Caller ending in 5005. And our last caller is the caller ending in 4251.
Okay, and Ms. Hurd, do we have any written documentation from the public on this one? Okay, all right, hearing no comments from the public. I'll go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:15. Just a quick question before we move on. Can you got... The folks on the call, can y'all hear us okay, or is it... Is... Are you only getting feedback when someone on the phone is speaking?
Just unmuted, I think it's Carrie, ending in 2528, for example times. Can you hear us, Carrie?
We can hear you... Well, I can hear you perfectly, but I believe a mic is picking up what we're saying and saying it back to us, so it's a really bad echo, but everyone there is perfectly clear.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. I don't know what's there, it sounds like the only reverberation's coming from the back of the hall, so... So now's the time in the agenda for citizens' comments. I will open the floor to any citizens' comments. Do we have anyone on the phone that would like to make any citizens' comment?
And I'll call the roll. The phone number's 1679.
No.
Not currently.
Okay, and then next caller is caller ending in 5005. And the last caller ending in 4251.
Hearing none. Ms. Hurd, do we have any written citizens' comments? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on along into the financial report. Good to go? Okay. All right, I mean, thank you very much, Mr. Red. Appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The action requested here is to approve consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Motion to approve.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving along into old business. Item A is to discuss status of Main Street improvements project. I think you've got an action packed... Well, I don't know if that's important, but you go right ahead.
So just an update on our Main Street improvement project. A few weeks ago, the North Carolina Department of Transportation instructed every participant locally administered projects program to postpone their projects indefinitely, so we may not proceed with our project at this time, and that's due to funding issues that DOT has in meeting their statutory cash minimum requirements. Fortunately, I have forced funding over the last week or two with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is our MPO, and they have indicated that they've had some promising conversation with DOT that they would be willing to entertain entering into agreements with municipalities that have approved projects and construction authorization to allow them to proceed if they agree to defer reimbursement for a period of between six and eighteen months. So that would essentially mean that we would upfront pay for the cost of construction, which is approximately $800,000 to $900,000. We would take that out of our fund balance, which is currently about $1.7 million, and then we would wait eighteen months to be reimbursed, up to eighteen months to be reimbursed by NCDOT. So I have expressed that we are willing to have that conversation with DOT, and Campo has told me that they'll relay that information and get in touch with us as soon as possible. I will certainly bring you an update as soon as... As soon as we have a chance, as soon as we receive significant update, but my recommendation would be that we do agree to defer reimbursement, just because I know you all really want that project, and we've already done a decent amount of engineering, and we've got temporary construction easements from people that are downtown, and there's also resurfacing that's combined with that project, but again, I'll provide an update as more significant information comes forward. That's all I have, sir.
So right now, it's in the discussion phase?
Yes, sir.
Negotiations?
Yes, sir, as of right now, we're prohibited from proceeding, but we're discussing the possibility of entering mutual agreement to proceed with the understanding that we might not be reimbursed for up to eighteen months. Yes, sir.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners?
I have a concern.
Yes, sir.
I'll wait until we do this. Go back.
Right.
It's a little bit shaky if we spend the money that we might like to get back.
It's a good concern, and I'll clarify that it's not that we won't get it back, it's just a matter of when, but the agreement, in order for us to sign on to any agreement, would have to state that we would get reimbursed, and understand also that this is actually not state money. This is federal money. It's through... It's money, federal money, that's distributed from the Federal Highway Administration to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and then to the town. So the problem is that when the town spends the money, we pay our contractors, and then we apply for reimbursement from DOT. They reimburse us, and then in turn, apply for reimbursement from the federal government. But each reimbursement process takes, you know, thirty to ninety, maybe a hundred and twenty days, and the problem is that the cash balance at DOT is so low that they would actually go below their statutory required minimum cash balance, and so there's no way that they can do that, basically quote, $800,000. And that is... It's shocking to know that an organization as large as North Carolina Department of Transportation can't do that, but of course, you know, they have to treat all their... All the municipalities that participate in this locally administered projects program similarly, and so... But that's a very good concern. We have a little bit of additional information as far as where we're going from here.
Well, we all also know that they're...
Yes, sir, that is also correct.
I thought they were printing it all the time, though. Well, I think from, you know, where we've been, where we started, kind of where we are, we've been, as much as I can say, we haven't been kicking it, kind of, but it's always been extenuating factors that have kind of prohibited us from meaning to do this. You know, we were talking about this September, well, heck, probably May of last year, with the idea that we were gonna get started in September of last year.
Right.
And then that got pushed to, you know, I guess, late winter and spring, and now here we are. So, you know, we've committed to doing a lot of things. Is it a little scary? Is it a little risky? Yes, I think it's a... I think it'll certainly be a positive impact on the town, the poll, with giving a New Street revitalization. How long have we been talking about this, Commissioner Red? How long have you been... How long have you been talking about it?
So I was hoping to get sidewalk and crosswalks for my oldest child to go to elementary school. My youngest one just graduated from elementary school this afternoon. So we can help the next person now.
This whole process started in 2016. I was reviewing that with Jim Lawson, ladies, with a few mighty questions about this whole thing. Luckily, I say so through emails.
Sure.
And it's just frustrating. There's a lot of work that's blended into it. It is what it is.
I certainly have tried to... The mayor's been appreciative of a bit more of my effort than Delton Tower Board, because I don't wanna conclude... I already ended it with emails. I don't think I need to send you anymore, but I've reached out to our local representative on the State Transportation Board, I've reached out to our local representative in the state legislature, as well as the state senate, I've reached out to the governor's office, I've had public records requests sent to DOT, asking them to provide copies of all correspondence relating to these activities, and so I'm sure that... I'm sure that DOT would like to give us the money and get rid of... Get rid of me, kind of, as soon as they can, so...
You said it. All right.
Not in mafia that way.
No, completely.
Professional that way.
Completely understood. Completely understood. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? All right, action requested here is to direct town administrators to proceed with the Main Street Improvements Project and approbation of fund balance for project expenses not to exceed the approved project budget up to full project cost if NCDOT cannot reimburse the town by June 30, 2021.
I made a question.
What's that?
I made a question.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a clarification that this is essentially directing you to proceed in that direction to negotiate with DOT about the deferred reimbursement, with the understanding that reimbursement will be required on Sunday, and the final agreement before it's executed would certainly come to you for approval because of the email. Thank you, Mr. Red.
No, thank you, Lord.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table from Commissioner Red. Do I hear a second, sir? All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And any opposed?
No.
And second item in old business is item B, adopt annexation ordinance 2020-1, Albemarle Properties LLC, Lot 2, of Youngsville Commerce Center. We've just had a public hearing on this. Were there any additional comments, questions, concerns from the commissioners? All right, hearing none. The action requested here is to adopt the annexation ordinance 2020-1. Do I hear a motion?
I don't see what about it.
Second. Okay, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8 is under new business, and item A there is text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, Section 10.1-37A, outdoor storage; 10.1-37C, outdoor storage standards, Article 3, definitions, and Table 8.1, table of uses. I know you heard a brief summary before the public hearing from Mr. Clark and Ms. Klinger. Were there any questions, comments, concerns before we move on?
I have a couple... Sure, sorry. So one of the things that it mentions under staff comment, it says that the planning staff supports the proposed amendment, and these provisions will allow for more development on smaller lots. Can you clarify what that means?
I'll unmute Ms. Klinger just for a moment, because I do believe that she is the individual that offered that comment. One moment, please. Ms. Klinger, did you hear Commissioner Red's question?
I did not hear the whole part of the question.
Sure, so I'll repeat the question, and it's essentially, you made a comment in your staff evaluation of this item that it would allow for additional development of properties. Can you repeat the actual closing?
Sure, because these provisions will allow for more development on smaller lots.
More development on smaller lots. Commissioner Red, just wondering if you could explain on that comment.
So basically, one of... Had people calling up...
Ms. Klinger, I'm asking this...
One of the things that happened was that we had a lot of inquiries about property industrial district. It either wasn't established or it was where they were under five acres, and they wanted to have outdoor storage on their property, and we had to tell them that they couldn't. Because we also had a conversation with Richie, that Franklin County Economic Department, who also had some powers, similar to ours. So we've... We've had to send people away from bringing their... Into town because of this.
Got it, thank you. So to give a little bit more clarity, essentially, if you have... For example, a good example might be the Victorian, if they wanted to have a small shed outside to store additional chairs to make sure that they could, you know, fit larger capacity in that facility, obviously assuming that they were still complying with building code and the fire code, they wouldn't be able to do that, so this just provides more versatility for especially smaller lots under five acres. Is that helpful?
Yes, and is the storage... Is it required to be in a shed?
Can you speak to that, Ms. Klinger?
It is not required to be in a shed. It's anything covered at a covered outdoor store.
Can you... Can you elaborate on what the definition of covered is?
So, for example, like a, uh. Like it's a, to place public works, this where it means for it to happen like a covered, like with a roof on it.
Got it. Okay. Um, I'll also ask Mr. Clark if you have any additional comments on these, uh, this line of questioning by Commissioner Redd?
Uh, as, as I indicated, the, um, uh, the current limitation of five acres or larger has excluded quite a few buildings, for example, Park Avenue, as, as a good example, where there was two, three acres, a big sized company and basically they've had new storage. Everything has to be inside a building that's covered and is not exposed to the outside of the current ordinance. Um, so this would allow, uh, smaller tracks, let's say, uh, acre, two, three acres within a building, but there would be also provisions could be in the back or in the side yard, but not in the front yard, um, of outside storage, uh, within, uh, either covered or uncovered, uh, deck for equipment, it could be for porkless, things of that nature being used by the tenant. And our current ordinance, uh, basically put them as prohibited on that.
Can you, um, I'm kind of incorporating some of the concern in Mr. Redd's line of questioning. Can you provide any detail on the standards that might be applied to the storage facility in whatever form it may take?
Uh, certainly. Uh, if the property is adjacent to industrial or surrounded by industrial, then, um, there still is buffering requirements, uh, because it's gonna be within, uh, five or ten feet of the property line, uh, prescribed or so forth. If it's, uh, anything that's adjacent to any other district, such as, uh, any residential or other, uh, uh, types of, uh, non-residential, then it requires pretty significant buffering requirements to be held, called with base in the red.
Got it, thank you very much. So essentially the, the requirements for the facility in which the, whatever material is to be stored would be generally consistent with the other exterior appearance standards of that zone. Is that helpful?
Don't we have to take back already? Have outside storage?
Uh, it is permitted in certain, that zoning districts on certain parcel sizes, this is essentially allowing it in, for example, Pacific zoning, where normally it's not permitted, but if the, the storage is used for an ancillary, a purpose that's an incident to the primary use, then it is allowed. For example, we would not be able to store in a, in a shed outdoors on our public works facility, um, you know, a box of, uh, spare parts, vehicle parts, of course, enclosed. Um, and similarly, you know, if, if the big fat just wanted to have a, you know, a shed outside for their chairs, they wouldn't necessarily be able to do that. Um, so this is providing a little bit more flexibility. I think big fat is not necessarily a good example because their block is larger than most.
How about these hard work?
Um, what specifically about these hard work? If they would. Uh, they, 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 if it was incidental to the primary use, then yes, it would be allowed and it would have to conform to the other appearance standards that their primary building would have to adhere to. And, you know, the size and setbacks of whatever structure they wanted to use to store would also be consistent with the zoning that that property desires.
Outside storage, you post it.
Um, I don't believe that's allowed in, in that specific zoning district. They do, okay, I'll have to make sure that we look into that. Thank you for your point.
Okay, any additional comments, questions, concerns? All right, hearing none. The action requested here is to approve the proposed text amendments. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'd like to motion that we're.
Second. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, item B. Kansas State's not having a new button, I could've just. Sorry, sorry about that if anyone heard that, uh, my apologies. Um, item B is a zoning application, uh, CMA dash two hundred and three twenty-seven, uh, for property located on Four Pack Lane submitted by Eddie Keever in F.C. Winston. Uh, obviously we did have a public hearing about that earlier as well. No citizens commented on that. Do I hear any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? Okay, uh, the action requested here is to approve the proposed rezoning application. Sir? All right, we've got a first and a second there. Uh, any discussion before we move to vote? And hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, as I'm see Brian Whitley, uh, of the Victorian Youngsville, uh, request to update the noise ordinance. Is Mr. Whitley on the phone? So I can put him on the spot and have him talk to us for a little bit?
He is, uh, if you're with me, uh, Mr. Whitley, if you could for us identify the last quarter of your phone number just to make sure that I've got you unmuted.
Yeah, who's in there?
Uh, can you identify the last four, please?
Two, five, two, eight.
Two, five, two, eight, excellent, thank you. So I'll just go ahead and mute everyone to make sure we don't have any feedback, but we can hear you. Um, just be aware that, uh, all of the written materials that you had submitted prior to this meeting are in front of the board, so if you'd like to draw attention to any of those materials, feel free to do so. Um, and, uh, I'll turn the floor back over to the mayor.
Uh, so yeah, Mr. Whitley, uh, you approached the board, uh, prior to the pandemic, uh, and I know you and I have had a couple of conversations, uh, leading up to that with, uh, questions, comments, concerns about the potential, uh, for making some adjustments in the, uh, noise ordinance. So I am going to, uh, let you speak openly and freely and, uh, as Mr. Cordero stated, if you had anything that you'd like to add or any special item that you want to draw attention to, uh, please refer to do so, but, uh, having said that, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Well, thank you and hello everyone. Wish it was a better time to meet, but we are here now. Unfortunately, I was unable to meet with everyone in person. YouTube and so on. But I hope I can get my point across just as well. Um, I'd gladly answer that, that wasn't a lot, uh, true, uh, submitted. Uh, and I do want to point out that the testimony, um, that you have in front of you, I was only able to collect those over one weekend of time. So if, uh, under better circumstances, I believe, I would have a lot more people in support. But just a little more.
Mr. Whitley, I don't know.
Tried to do a lot to create a barrier between commercial and resident, seeing that we are the last business to be working in residential zone. I, I don't know if you've been down for Main Street, but we've created a five foot boom, we've planted shrubs that will grow ten by ten and make a great sound barrier, uh, and we're really trying to be, you know, conscious of everyone around us and make sure residents are happy with everything. I honestly, the video that I took, uh, kind of showing what's amplified sound in the area would, would be, uh, did anyone have a chance to watch that?
I don't recall seeing anything on that, Mr. Whitley.
We'll be sure to, uh, provide that to the board and ask them to review it after this evening. I reviewed myself, I can tell you, and so did the rest of the staff.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, but it was just pointed out, I was able to first have amplified sound happening next to us and it was not a bother to us whatsoever. I have seen that's what reading that the police chief uses, uh, in the town of Youngsville and it read above the decimals as loud and yet I could not hear it in my house and it was not a nuisance outside. So the point of the video was to show that if we spent a couple hours on the weekend, I, I don't see that being a hindrance for this. And I do apologize if I'm pausing myself talking, it kind of gets me off track a little. Um, and on a previous meeting, I may have requested to hear a little about our business, uh, and how many events we have this year and kind of how it would affect us personally. For twenty twenty, as long as everything, everything clears up and we're gonna operate. Uh, we do have nineteen events on books. And the, the thing I do want to point out is the amount of bookings we have missed due to restriction on amplified sound. I know of three cases specifically that we missed business because nine P M. was too early for them. Uh, and that doesn't speak for others that just didn't tell us that was the reason. So that, that's a big, big factor for people when they're trying to enjoy their evening. They want to be able to enjoy the outside and half the year, the sun doesn't even set until after eight thirty and you don't have last light until after nine o'clock. So it's in, in Youngsville, it's just, you're not able to. And a couple of other things that I'd like to point out, uh, as reading through the testimony and hearing from people, we just, some things that were made were, uh, after work, parents getting babysitters and getting ready and want to go enjoy the time out in Youngsville. You know, they, they don't have a chance to because they're home from work six o'clock, their babysitter will come seven or eight and by the time they get out and about, they're, they have to head inside, they have to close doors, they can't, uh, catch the weather and have a beer, listen to live music. And personally speaking, it's really hard to get friends of mine to come to Youngsville because everything's a little bit early. Uh, and when I say closer, I mean the outdoor space. Uh, something that we love so much about Raleigh is, you know, to sit outdoors, enjoy music, enjoy the weather. Um, and we are not the only ones affected. Uh, we spoke with multiple local businesses around the area and they're, okay, come on, helped a lot with getting these test. Amy at Buckville has expressed her interest in having these changes, including the ones that aren't directly affected like Sharon Stanley and Backhouse Coffee. Uh, they also expressed their interest in this change. And if looking at, like, based in downtown, if we were, we would be more up to par with what their requirements are. And I think that is a big factor for a small town that wants to grow. Um, I know I'm kind of all over the place, but I feel like I kind of touched on a lot of points on the week. And, yeah, I know that if you have any questions, won't you?
No, and we, and we appreciate your time, Mr. Whitley, um, you know, I, I think you did a pretty good job of noting some of the, summarizing and, uh, getting some of the feedback from, from citizens. And I, I do have a question for you because obviously this is gonna come up and we've got to be able to strike a happy balance, right? And I think everyone in this room is pro downtown and pro business and we want to be amenable to helping you guys out, but we also have citizenry, uh, that may have, uh, concerns about the noise going past a certain timeframe. I know in the packet that you handed to us, uh, a lot of the feedback was absolute, well, all of the feedback was supportive to the point where even my name somehow snuck in here somewhere. But I was just curious to see if you, and I, and I know you've been, I'll, I'll talk a little about that. I was curious to see had, if you received any, uh, not so positive or any negative feedback, you know, any that you spoke of.
So I will say a lot of the people we spoke with were at these places of business, um, that's before this change, so the ones that we didn't want to give the testimony were the ones that, quote, unquote, don't want to be involved in the politics. Uh, I do want to point out on the testimony that I got one from, and a neighbor across the street, uh, Patsy, she lives directly across from the Youngsville, uh, not from Youngsville, from the Victorian and she was in full support of us. And all those changes that I spoke to at the beginning were to try and make things better between us and our neighbor, uh, because I know he is very outspoken about this change. And we want to do everything we possibly can to accommodate. And we are also, you know, willing to hire off-duty officers to keep things under control and make sure things are regulated. We've, uh, spoke very briefly, uh, I believe we spoke with Phil and Police Chief lately, uh, months ago about it. And we've also spoken with Kent Winston, uh, Sheriff of Franklin County, and he's willing to supply officers for that if, if needed. So we're, we're trying to do everything to make sure everyone is pleased, but when it gets a bit, you know, that not everyone will be happy, I'm glad to admit that, but I think the positive outweigh the negative by a lot.
Okay. Thank you for that, uh, feedback. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Whitley?
I don't have any questions, I have to stay. We need to do everything we can to help these small businesses, especially, especially at this time. Yeah, we need to move into the twenty-first century as far as entertainment goes, eleven o'clock, nine o'clock, in my opinion, is unpleasant. These businesses have to turn off the Hollywood, so that's where I stand.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
I don't have a comment. I don't think we should do our best until we got all the residents around us, so you think?
Agree, and, and I think that's part of that, that conversation, just kind of opening this up.
Obviously downtown is not gonna bother me where I live.
Sure.
But a couple of walks around here and contrary to all the positive comments, I note the fact that there's a neighborhood. But I think they should be gathered, uh, presented as to how the actual residents in this town feel with all due respect to sm, uh, supporting small businesses. That is not the total core of Youngsville. We have people that live there, drive soon here. We don't know what they want.
Sure, and that's fair and I think that's part of the reason why we're kind of bringing it out in open now is because part of when, when Mr. Whitley first approached us, um, you know, you can't, it's just not a light switch you can flip on or off, right? So, um, Phil presented, Mr. Cordero presented to us and said, you know, we probably need to treat this similar to how we did when we shut down Nassau. Get as much information, get direction from the commissioners and then do a survey of the potentially affected people in the surrounding area to see.
And we found out people who did run Nassau fully supported the closing. Most were native, combatants, people who didn't do it inside there.
Good, I totally confer, I've had my fair share of that for sure, so. But yeah, I think that's kind of what we need to do now is, is direct Phil on what he needs to find out from the citizenry that could potentially be affected by any approval of moving it to eleven o'clock on Friday, Saturday, uh, and then potentially ten on Sunday, so, um, so I'm just kind of opening it up for discussion.
Um, I'm all about live music and supporting locals. I'm a man drinking.
I'm against drinking, so and outdoor space, so I think it sounds great. Um, I think that that delicate balance is really hard specifically with Youngsville is because people moved here because it was kind of out of the way and it wasn't loud and it was country and they wanted their little space. And so with what you say, I think that the people that are currently living here didn't expect the downtown to kind of grow and then all of a sudden this whole house turns into this place that has live music till eleven o'clock at night. With that said, I've been in my home fourteen years. I didn't expect gas station in the backyard. Um, I can hear her rural music very clearly from the backyard, um, which I don't mind, but I understand that some people do. Um, I do think it will be the journey for some people. So I think that's why we're going to choose that is to make that decision. So I'm happy to go listen to the citizens and see what their opinions are. And then I would like to be the one that weighs whether the businesses or the individuals, you know, which way we need to go because I, I do want to support this. I'm really happy with the direction that Youngsville is going in downtown. Um, but it is so small and everybody's right on top. The businesses is a little bit different than in Raleigh or in Franklin County or it's a, it's just a very tight space. So with that said, I would like to support it, but I definitely don't like working.
Good.
Um, I, I definitely support the idea. Admittedly, I'm a night owl and I'm never in bed before eleven thirty, getting a weeknight. Uh, but we frequent the downtown areas. Um, we've lived in this area since two thousand and eight and I would have spent any time down here until these new businesses opened up and had places to go and meet neighbors. Um, and it's been really a good experience. Uh, here at Yacht Club, the outdoor area is beautiful. Um, and to me, nine o'clock is extremely early, especially for a weekend. And I think we've got some potential there that, that we're not tapping into, uh, to have that extra, you know. I'm not saying we have to go to eleven, but nine is just a good area already. You know, if we're going to go to eleven, maybe ten. Um, but I, I am supporting down here and looking forward to seeing what comes from the surveys that we have and then make a decision.
Commissioner Johnson, bro.
You're the only one that hasn't spoken.
Not, not a car company in the summer time is probably just wait some, something like that. Uh, I think anybody that does a train track, uh, gets used to the more of the dirt and with it. So, you know, I hate to see this, I hate to see the town roll its carpets in the night. Uh, I think we have some things off that we haven't had off in the past. Uh, I think the citizens need to have an opportunity to, uh, enjoy that. So I'm agreeing a little bit like everybody else and like to see how it works with, uh, we are focused on that and we represent, so yeah, of course. But at the end of the day, my thought process is, uh, I like the businesses up a little bit later.
All right. Thank you for that. And like I said, you know, obviously anytime we're talking about something like this, it is difficult to get that perfect balance. And I don't know that there ever is a perfect balance in these scenarios. Uh, just kind of looking at what the county does and should, and seeing that it's eleven P M. all week and understanding that that could be very rule of areas and I understand that. Um, how do we want to direct Mr. Cordero to proceed?
Yeah, I interject.
Absolutely. Good idea.
Sure. Uh, so the first comment I'd like to make is that dovetail off of a point I think Mr. Brain tried to make that I think is valuable. And I don't lean one way or another, but I certainly think that, you know, if, when there's social gatherings, um, obviously once hopefully all of this gets behind us, uh, that it, it does breed a sense of community that certainly if you don't have a place like Yacht Club or it doesn't even have to be a place that serves alcohol. I think it could be any, any entertainment venue, you know, bowling alley or whatever the case is somewhat where people in the community can go and, and, and meet their neighbors and things of that nature. I think there's certainly value there. So I just wanted to make that comment. But I, I also want to say that what we can do is a comprehensive citizen survey via the use of, uh, electronic means, you know, email, uh, the website and door hangers for those that are less internet friendly. Um, and we can provide, uh, comprehensive choice or, or, uh, comprehensive list of options, you know? So would you support a weekday, uh, uh, increase of the time from nine P M. to ten P M.? Would you support an increase of the weekday time from nine P M. to eleven P M.? And that way we'll see, you know, how many people are here to support an additional hour and we'll also see how many people would be for two hours. Uh, so we can, I think in a comprehensive manner and a succinct manner so as not to take too much time for residents, afford them the opportunity to give us some real quality information. So what I can do is I can devise, work with staff to devise, uh, the instrument that will use to collect that data and then provide it to the board via email feedback, um, certainly reply individually if you have any recommendations for improving that instrument to make sure that we're collecting the data that we want to collect. And then we can, uh, make sure to send that out and also certainly drive the processes as expeditiously as possible. The only other comment I wanted to make as well is that, um, just as this board is not bound, uh, by any other previous board, no subsequent board is bound by any decision that this board makes. So, um, hopefully the board doesn't turn over and remember, uh, because I enjoy working with you all. Uh, but I say that to say that if we find out in six months that this is a bad decision and we increase it to eleven P M., then we could of course just modify the ordinance again to move it back to nine P M. or move it back to ten P M. Now, of course, we want to consider the fact that we want things to be relatively static because, you know, people are going to make business decisions that are financial investments surrounding these types of regulations. So I would say, you know, make sure to give it, uh, its fair consideration and give it a chance to provide feedback if you do decide to change. But just know that at the end of the day, you can restrict it as well as expand it at any point in time. But that would conclude my comments. So I think that simple motion to direct me to proceed in the manner that I recommended would be sufficient at this point.
We're going to vote. Second. Uh, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote, to connect, uh, Mr. Cordero?
Yeah, will we be able to see the results and assess them before the next board reading? Because I'm sure that people now are trying to vote for call and do other things and so I don't want to wait too long into this decision that you're going to make.
That's a great question. I can promise you that I will provide every opportunity for citizens to, uh, provide their feedback as quickly as possible to include putting door hangers on every door in the area that's going to be affected downtown. Um, however, I take control how much or how quickly we'll get a response. But, you know, you make a decision when you have enough data. I sort of, who wouldn't want to rush a decision like this? So if we need to post money for another meeting, then, you know, that's what I would recommend doing, but I'll certainly try to collect as much data as quickly as possible. Just sort of.
Before we get to the next board, it would also require a period because we did about some changes to the ordinance as well. So once you decided that you wanted to change, we, um, changed the ordinance, we presented that in a board meeting and we scheduled a little period for it. Um, Bob would have more clear information on that, but when we did the last board change, we had to.
Madam Corrigan's correct. Um, and so, you know, we basically proposed the specific text amendments so people would be able to see, okay, you know, section three B. of, you know, article seven of Town Code is to be changed from nine P M. to ten P M. and they'd be able to publicly comment on that.
I was, I was also thinking that. So, um, and, and again, I know we're in discussion in the period here, uh, but just to make sure, are, are we trying to give this prior to the July meeting or do you make a presentation in the July meeting and then set up a hearing in the July meeting or August?
I think, I think it'd be reasonable to provide data to you as soon as I have it and if you, you know, I can certainly communicate with each of the commissioners individually and then report back to the group as to whether the group decides that, you know, this would be a matter that we'd like to take out. So I would not feel comfortable giving you a concrete answer to that question right now because we don't have any data.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay. Uh, any additional discussion? All right. Uh, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. Uh, item number D is reappoint Marcus Hertz to the Youngsville Planning Board, uh, E T J. member, term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Action requested here is to approve the reappoint. All right. We've got a first and a second there. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. Motion carries there. Item E, uh, accept town attorney Edward Barfongu's resignation. Um, the action requested here is accept resignation with gratitude. Uh, before we even entertain that, Ed, just want to thank you for your service to the town. Uh, you've been around, and, and I know you've said it pretty extensively, um, in your letter, but, uh, you definitely seem to have some, some good times and some difficult times. Uh, you've definitely been an asset to us, so I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your comment on being able to serve the town. I hope we continue to serve the town in a different capacity as a board of the being leading the town gathering, serving the board. And I hope to help out with the notably, continue to refer and with the various priorities that I had over the last few years and to come to the heart of all of it, to all of the things that you're here to help. Happy to help in any way that we can, with this year's decisions, uh, as a board. And if anything, I agree with you, you always have a duty to serve the town, including what we used to do in fire and what we do variety safely here about handbooks and that may be a lot of time about it. I agree, really appreciate it. My own speed must be word out of the way.
Sure.
I, I personally wanted to thank Ed. He's really been a part of a lot of the community out there. Then the road was cooking every Christmas, though the last couple of Christmas was made a food donation for recent, uh, the donation recently, the food bank, the food bank and water guns were here. Thank you.
Oh, my way, my way. This is usually area, so that's easy to have. Thank you.
You forgot one thing, the singing.
That's right. I don't hear what my wife.
The cooking and all this stuff, you forgot the singing piece of it, so.
It's looking good, dude.
And I will also, uh, give Ed my best wishes to his new family. I'm sure this will afford you an opportunity to kind of focus on some things that are more important as well. So I just, you know, happy that everything turned out, everything went well and my best wishes to you and your family.
Thank you. I do appreciate, I don't know if it's important, but I do appreciate you, my mom, I'm grateful that you, uh, request it all, you, you person, because I'm praying in personal judgment and speech and bills, credibility and employees and, and efficient manners, to say truly all higher. Thank you.
Congratulations on the man that moved, Ed.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed. All right. So again, the action requested here is to accept resignation, uh, with gratitude. Do I hear a motion?
A motion. Sorry.
We've got a first and a second. Any additional, uh, discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Uh, item F, approve contract with and appoint Hartzad Walbrook as town attorney effective July one, twenty twenty. Uh, the action requested here is to approve contract and.
Make a motion.
Uh, first and a second. Uh, any discussion before we move to vote here? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. And, uh, item G is to amend fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one fee schedules to set parks and recreation field rental rates at thirty dollars and forty dollars per hour without lights for in-town and out-of-town residents respectively, and at sixty dollars and eighty dollars per hour with lights for in-town and out-of-town residents respectively.
I have one, the only one comment which would be, uh, this moves the rate up a little bit. Uh, I think right now it's twenty-five dollars an hour instead of thirty dollars an hour for in-town rates, but just based on demand and based on increased electricity costs, we feel that that's reasonable. And the other thing that we're trying to do here is also reflect the similar, uh, structure is we have programs where there's a separate in-town rate and out-of-town rate. So that way people that don't pay taxes to the town will contribute more toward, uh, the cost of, you know, installation of new lights, maintenance, things of that nature. And this was Andrew's recommendation, so I certainly appreciate him, uh, bringing the recommendation to be, to be creative and ensure that the programs are funded in the most sustainable way.
All right. Any, uh, comments, questions, concerns from the commissioners?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. You know, uh, I don't know, this, um, this is a word that you say. Uh, Andrew has proved, um, a very, a very, very, very good job as far as handling the influx of people that come into town and want to just feel, uh, because, uh, although anybody that's not at sports court doesn't understand that's a frequent.
Yeah.
Very much so. Uh, field space is just, uh, it's unheard of. So to be able to open that up, you could maintain it in books and somebody doing it every day, every night and just goes to report that we're doing the right thing. And increasing that is not going to slow down because, because right now.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Johnson. Uh, any other comments? All right. The action requested here is to approve as recommended. Second. All right. We've got a first and a second there. Uh, any discussion before we move to vote? All right. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Um, we'll get into reports and other business. Uh, work has been an absolute bear. I'm sure it has been for lots of folks, uh, especially with having kiddos at home. Um, but, uh, we had a little bit of a tragic situation earlier this week. Um, and I want to certainly send my condolences, um, to the family of James and Lowery. He's got a very young son that plays in Iowa Parks and Rec, uh, baseball league. I know he plays basketball, but I know he definitely plays baseball. Um, uh, family definitely, I mean, it's a very tragic, uh, scenario. So my thoughts and prayers and condolences certainly go out to the, to our family. Other than that, I want to congratulate all the seniors, all the kids that are moving up from, from middle school and from elementary school to middle school. Um, we've been in a very odd situation with the way we've had to kind of adjust life and how we react to six feet apart and wearing masks and different things like that. So I'm sure it's, uh, a very unique situation with any seniors. I couldn't imagine, and I know I'm old, you graduated a long, long time ago from high school, but I couldn't imagine a scenario where you worked that hard to get, you know, your diploma and you can't even celebrate with a parent who walked across the stage. It's just, it's a, it's a tough scenario, but, uh, definitely want to send a shout out, congratulations to all the Franklin High School seniors. Um, and I'm very, very much looking forward to see what they're going to do as our future leaders go forward. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was going to report on the DOT project. I've already done that and I think rest, um, I'll discuss during closed session. So I had a minute to report. And also I'm sure Chief Whitley will give us a riveting report on our traffic enforcement project.
Absolutely. All right. Commissioner.
May I come?
Yes, sir.
We do have a road clean, you're trying to be very interested. Ten o'clock when we get to town hall. Um, the Youngsville Kwanzaa Club has been meeting the last few meetings in person. We've been meeting at the museum as well, uh, since your uncle, we opened up tonight. We use a Zoom call to go and so, uh, it's not close, sir. Let's just say the technology's, so it's good to be, be back, uh, together. Um, Fall Festival's still on target for September twenty-sixth, but stay tuned. That's all I can say. Still on the calendar. We can pull it off. We have a bunch of shows, we can still pull it off. The other thing I had, I had, um, came through my wife about golden service care. I don't know where that's staying, but it's, but, uh, just, I'm just saying, that point out.
Sure. And one thing that I would like to address with that is, um, the appropriate means of filing complaint would be to contact Town Hall.
Right.
Um, social media, if someone breaking into your home, you wouldn't go on Facebook and say, oh my gosh, someone's breaking into. someone's breaking into my home. So the same thing would hold true if there's a complaint like that. And this is not directed at you.
No, I'm just saying, it's something that they don't control. But I don't know that, I was telling you the case to me.
Sure. And I think the initial response is always to maybe air grievances that way instead of actually going to people it needs to be reported to, so we can actually handle it in a timely fashion. And I've spoken with Randy, Ms. Quinella was on the case last week. The cemetery was cut. Do we have any issues with the weed eater stuff? And the reason why I ask that is because I've noticed, and this did happen at the cemetery, because I personally rode out there to take a look at it, to make sure that it was cut. But I noticed around some of the headstones, there were some tall weeds. I've even noticed it at the town hall before. So if we need to find a weed eater, or if they borrow mine, I'll let them go out.
We did have an issue with one, I think we procured another by now. But also, we received, sometimes we'll receive complaints from specific families saying, hey, you know, don't cut around headstones too close, you did your damage to headstones that you liked the way, you know, that you do it, or there's specific circumstances there that you might not be aware of, but they're, hopefully that addresses your concern.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for asking.
I have one more thing. We're working with the women's club and the museum here, they're working interest and area of the grounds, back in shape, they've done some claims, we've got some other claims. The research group is going to help us with the weeds. They also are going to help us with the road again, which is really cool. Anyway, just FYI.
The, you said the June 10th?
June 20th.
June 20th.
At 10:00 AM, we meet at those offices.
I wrote the 10th down, the 10th was yesterday, right? Geez. It's been a long week, sorry. And which, which section, is it the same section from?
It's the same, 96 going out and down South Cross Street. It's hard to go, I'm hard to make. Sometimes I go out Friday and do that 96 stretch myself. But it hasn't been done for three months with everything going on. I didn't want to gather people together, so I'm sure it's looking a little rough.
All right. Anything outside of Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm sorry.
Ms. Marita.
Along that line, I did get several texts and just complaints that I'd like to share with Emily, who's connected before the end of the evening. Also, this is not a priority, but there is an issue with the light down there. So if you're coming south, you get a green arrow to turn left, is that correct? But the people that are coming north don't know that there's a green arrow. So they believe that they can turn right on red, same time as someone turning left on a green arrow. And there's been at least four instances of the same issue that involve cars in the area. So I just wanted to put that out to the universe. There may be a don't turn on red, which kind of is silly for such a small intersection, or, I don't know, I don't have a solution. I just wanted to point out that that has been the issue.
I've noticed, I've noticed the same thing, and I think it's, most people think, well, they can do kind of a, for lack of better terms, California stop and then just go, go right. And I think the same thing's left, too, but.
Well, I don't know that they know that there's a green arrow. And then they assume that they can turn right before this person turns left.
That's right. I'll, I'll make sure to take a look into it, and we can see if there's any traffic crisis that we can solve.
Well, if you're turning left, you have a caution turn on the arrow.
Right.
So it's not quite the same. There is an issue with turning right.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Wiggins.
Well, I would, I don't have any complaints to make. I would like to comment to the Youngsville Police Department, but good to see that they're making some effort.
Yes, sir.
On some of the problems we've had, that I hope that will continue. In particular, on Nassau Street at 5:00 in the morning. We have a lot of people who turn to park at night.
And we've been addressing some of those votes, yes, sir.
I'm sure you have. And while we're on that subject, a number of these people are heading to a business in the old Tom Cops building. And that particular facility has taken up a heavy stack of cans in the road ditch. Your sign says free, and then a whole string of other signs in that ditch. So you might want to take a look at that.
I have actually had a resident complain about the noise there, the noise.
Thank you.
In addition, I would like to say that I fully support the Youngsville Police Department. If you have some of the negative publicity that police departments have heard, we will continue with your efforts.
Yes, sir, we will. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Wiggins, anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much, sir. Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I would like to tell Commissioner Wiggles, response to the police department has been, been much anticipated and much planned. But you're there as in presence. Don't expect to catch every person coming out of the way, but I think it adds up a little bit. Unfortunately for us, we haven't seen the work part of it, it's cool, not in. And people don't want to go through the intersection down, down the Speedway and the Little Shore. It's, you know, I know we have emphasis on that, but I just, yeah, I think over time, that will, that will change the mindset of folks on up down that street. But it's going to be ongoing problems on the town roads. Thank you for guys parking in the driveway across the street anytime. So other than that, weed eaters, just use mine, please restring it. So I've got two idiots on to get that out. But, you know, I think, you know, I'd like to do a cleanup day down the money park, because it has been getting a lot of use, so the trash does pile up. I've been down there on my own and dumped that trash myself, because I know the whole weekend, from a Friday to a Monday, there's a bunch of kids in and out of those areas. I know that those bottles don't make the trash. So try to go by there pretty often on one of the weekend days, try to pick that stuff up, get rid of it. But the efforts as far as the park, you know, just now getting to the little things that I see, that other people see, too, weeds around the fence line. Obviously, we got to figure out what we're going to do, grasses on the hill. Other than that, the facility's good as a band. Other than that, it's good.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Brown.
So I mentioned the Campod project updating the Morpheus area study a few times past me. Well, this Saturday is a virtual public meeting to have the public participate by including the study. And that will be at 10:00 AM, it's scheduled for lunch at 11:30. There is a Zoom meeting set up for, in my means, informational, I have it. And then there's a phone number for folks who just want to dial it. Zoom application. Thanks for talking to Jim Moss today.
I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I'm here for the other bit.
Yeah. So I thought I'd answer for five seconds. So I email to the law department to participate. And then we have a oversight team following that on Monday.
You did. Thank you for that update. All right. Planning is ongoing, Mr. Clinker, you still with this, or Mr. Clark, you still with this?
I'll, let's, let's let you be unmuted first.
Ms. Clinker, I just, I needed you, go ahead, George.
Yeah, I'm still here. So during the month of May, we had eight permanent applications submitted. Nine permanent issues, one was a holdover from the very last day in April that I needed some more information on. We issued two certificates of compliance, one for a lot in Holden Street and another for a lot in Paterson. Over 150 new cars were identified. We extended here 16 hours during 69 states. And during those weeks, over 40 illegal crimes were immediately removed. And we are researching remaining facts for compliance. If we determine that it's non-compliant, we will issue a violation that today an additional sign would remove if that. Are you asking on, um, two notes of violation for Nick R. Trump, one was to Hill Ridge Farms, so their off-tema sign at the corner of Holden Street, Holden Road and US 1. And the other was to Hating for their off-tema sign at Weather Street and US 1. Both were given a deadline of, first to have the violation corrected and after the second, both signs have been removed. Holden Street is where the white faces, putting basics in the two scrub stages. We, along with Franklin County Public Utilities, have already determined preliminary approval to do this, and the planning board respected our recommendations for the division of the paving plan. Official review of this will be completed, currently the review of the final pass this fall. We are also still seeking someone to fill our vacant ETS on the planning board. So spread the word and let us know if you know any amendments to this. And I was going to give an update on Memorial Day, but Commissioner Ray, my, he didn't that for me. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Clark, was there anything to add in addition to? Ms. Clinker?
Well, no, I think glad to hear you covered everything that we had known from the mic.
All right, sounds good. Well, I appreciate the, the feedback. All right. New town, sir?
Well, we're, sir. Yes, I would like to take off, thank you all for the opportunity. I'm reacting myself in Hartzell Walgreens, certainly in support of the service and supporting the Baker of the Walgreens. And also, again, just want to recognize Ed and Baker, who he's done, I don't know who we have, he's a very entrepreneurial man, who is helping the health and transitions of the community, so, all right.
All right. Thanks for that. And turn it over to Police Chief Wiggles, the service mayor.
Call for service, month of May, our agents, we put 287 calls for service, which was down from 340 calls on the same month last year. Happy to report there were no significant instances of crime associated with those passing service, so good news there. We fielded 11 motor vehicle collisions, which was the exact same number that we fielded in May of last year. We transported one individual for a complaint of injury and had two injuries associated with those collisions, but nothing of significance, fortunately. I'm happy to continue to report that we can't attribute any of those collisions to the closure over here in Nassau, so good news continues there. In light of what we were discussing earlier, we did begin a, a traffic safety campaign during the month of May, and that is ongoing and will continue to be ongoing. We put out a passive traffic monitoring device on Winston Street. Many of you may have seen, it went up on the 14th and ran until the time of this report. The first data we collected, and I believe Mr. Quinella pushed some of that out, y'all, was faulty in this regard, that the, the traffic device was what we would call is batching. It's a passive radar, so any, any vehicle that it reads coming down that road, then it takes the speed of that vehicle. The problem is sensitivity was a little high on it, so it was combining the speeds of two vehicles if they were traveling in the same direction. That's not uncommon, even when officers are running radar. The difference being, they can recognize it as batching and understand that it's not a singular vehicle. The machine obviously can't do that. So we corresponded with the, the provider's technical crew, and they walked us through the ways that we would need to kind of dial it in for a secondary route. And now it seems to be, to be working fine. And I have a present report for you on that, and I'll get to it in a minute. Our initial, even with the batching, we immediately recognized, as we've discussed before, that speeding was a, was a problem, and we made it abroad out there on Winston Street. Within just the first couple of days, officers issued four citations ranging from 15 to 29 miles an hour over the speed limit. Then we saw a significant decline in the observation of speeding and the issuance of those citations. I would attribute that to, and this was during midday hour, midday hours, where we saw most of the speeding per the monitoring device. I would attribute that to habitual speeders that were returning maybe from home due to COVID, because availability, you know, for restaurants and things like that being limited. They're coming to some of our outline areas and then maybe trying to make it back through town with Main Street, which is why we saw such a significant decline early on. Since then, our officers have continued in their efforts in this traffic safety campaign on Winston Street, Main Street, for Simmons, Franklin, Youngsville Boulevard, and Nassau, and had 17 hours of patrol time from 6:03 to 6:10 that we reported. There were seven written warnings and 12 citations. Notably, Main Street had 57 and 35 mile per hours on. How you accomplish that, as busy as the street is, remains to be seen, but someone managed to out of the way. And several that were in 53 and 35 and 52 and 35 on Youngsville Boulevard. In addition to the speeding aspect, which we, we took as a priority, because the speeding is a serious and significant public safety concern, we've also had a regulatory campaign underway. The first period of that campaign simply being observation and warning motors of regulatory violations associated with their vehicle, whether that be excessive noise, exhaust, window tint, things of that nature. And in that same period, since May 18th to the date of this report, officers issued 23 warnings, 18 of which dealt with improper lighting, four of which dealt with modified exhausts, and three were excessive noise. And then there were 14 speedings associated with that. Officers typically on the side streets aren't issuing citations for anything that would be less than 10 miles an hour. So 14 citations for speeding, you know, seems significant. Why would you cite them becomes the question. That's why they were probably within that 10 to 15 mile an hour speed. And there was nothing else associated with that speed, like a careless driver or anything like that, or inattention, which typically leads to higher incidence of collision. So they were basically riding at 15 was the, was kind of the unofficial cutoff for the issuance of a citation, and that's typically wide-ranging. Again, as part of the, the regulatory campaign, the first phase has been observation, and then associated with that observation is warning drivers of this campaign, advising them of the regulatory issues that they need to take care of their vehicle. And there have been a handful of citations issued for gross violations associated with those warnings. And I'll say that and say this, North Carolina doesn't have, we don't record capture data that's widely available, the issuance of warnings. So for instance, a patrol officer in Youngsville can't go on their mobile desktop and see an issuance of warning that may be another officer in town gave for the same violation. And that could be problematic. So what we have done is we, we have developed a program that we hope to, to institute tomorrow and use in the coming weeks, that we'll be able to compile that data from each individual officer and put it on a spreadsheet, so we know who our repeat offenders are, folks that are taking care of these regulatory issues. So we should see, for those of, you know, in the community that are concerned about some of these excessive noise violations, some of the exhaust issues that we. some of the exhaust issues that we've talked about, things of that nature. I think we'll be able to, uh, to address those accurately, uh, and with purpose in the coming weeks.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Late thing, there's been some traffic going pretty fast, uh, northbound and southbound. A lot of it, I think, is coming from the New April, that talk, but you know, it's twenty-five miles an hour, and there's a lot of kids. So just, I'm part of my guy, he's, you know, I hope I haven't had any of the yell. But the prime, I listen to them a lot.
Okay.
Just.
Yes, sir.
Concerned about the kids.
And I'll make the officers, uh, aware. Uh, and the, and to circle back on the, uh, the data, I don't want to ever look at, at Winston. Once we found out the issues with the batching, we put the, uh, this kind of passive capture device back out there from six-five to six-eight, just to make sure that it was, uh, running as it should. Uh, during that timeframe, uh, we recorded, uh, thirty, um, three thousand four hundred and seventy-two vehicles still on that roadway. And I believe that data to be accurate. Uh, so that gives you some idea of the amount of folks that are avoiding Main Street, uh, as you discussed earlier. Uh, fortunately though, the average speed was twenty-five point eight miles an hour, uh, my car is on. And there were only three individuals that were traveling in excess of forty miles an hour, but no cars traveling over, over forty-five. So it appears that our efforts have had some effect on, on Winston. So I hope that transfers to these other city streets as well.
So I have a question about that. Uh, so the data we received early on was that first of the day, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and you'll be receiving a supplemental report, including some of the data that Chief Woodley has mentioned this evening?
Yes.
And on the, uh, in our community policing efforts, uh, officers have been, uh, participating in a number of, um, citizens' parades, is the only thing that I know to categorize them as. Uh, we've got a number of requests to lead those parades, and it's typically for, uh, younger folks personally, some things like that. We've had also visited, uh, some elderly in the community that unbeknownst to them, as a surprise, uh, their folks would call and ask us to go by, you know, and sound horns and, uh, and, uh, put on the blue lights while they're sitting on the porches and things like that. So we've had some really nice, uh, citizen interactions. Uh, most recently on May sixteenth, for a eight-year-old boy, ended on the twenty-eighth, for a fifteen-year-old girl. Officer Woods and Officer McAdams, uh, led those community parades. Uh, and a couple of, and of those, I think one of them had like thirty vehicles in attendance. And in addition to that, they've supplemented, uh, the county for some requests to be out in the county and participate as well here and there. So it's, uh, despite the issues that we have had with the, uh, with the pandemic and the absence of social gatherings and communities being able to get together, we've still found opportunities for the, for the police to be active in the community, so, so that's. Um, School Resource Officer, uh, I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, know Officer Altesha Allen. Um, she'll no longer be, uh, S R O for the, uh, elementary school here. The, uh, Franklin County Sheriff's Department is, the School Resource Officer position across the state kind of falls under the purview of the Sheriff's Office to begin with. Uh, and the conversations that we have with Sheriff Winstead, uh, we determined it would be best if he assumed those duties, and he readily did, so I can say because it's sort of under his purview. But we'll continue to work with, uh, with Sheriff Winstead and whomever, whichever, uh, S R O he chooses to be out there with training and any events, uh, that are going on. And the Youngsville Police Department will continue to, uh, participate in local school lepers, as we've always done. Uh, Altesha Allen has moved on, uh, as a deputy with the Sheriff's Office. So if anyone runs into her, you may want to congratulate her on her new appointment. And that's all I have.
They had a parade in our neighborhood, it was a good school.
Yeah.
At first I didn't know what was going on, there was a police car, and everyone was going to talk.
Why are there problems with police?
I said, "Lila, come here." It was, he, he told me that, I'm glad you're awesome.
I want to be, sir.
I'm actually pretty, we, we, both of those, um, so, yeah, it's, it's neat. Um, I think it's, uh, very well received, which is kind of good. So I'm sure you guys are involved in the community, you know, they, an eight-year-old, they keep them fit, so. Thank you for that. Uh, what other questions, comments, words, or?
I have one comment, at risk of, uh, sounding like I'm getting on some thoughts. I would say that, uh, that I read a behavioral study as an undergraduate, that, uh, it was a study of successful people, that, uh, the difference between those that are, you know, moderately satisfied with life and those that are really satisfied, the difference is the ability to kind of look back at their accomplishments and where they began and where they are today, rather than always looking forward in the future. And I just want to say that I think, I hope, that Chief Woodley's presentation and the entire department, um, over the last six months, or at least since he was hired in December, has demonstrated a significant amount of improvement. And, and to kind of echo, uh, some of Commissioner Wiggins' comments earlier, I just want to thank you for what you do and the, and the risks that you take every day. And I think the effort has been put into providing the data, and, you know, that, that really shows that we are taking the direction that you've given us and we're running with it to make our community more safe. So I just want to thank you for that, and, uh, just encourage everyone to look, think, you know, not in a spirit, you know, passive achievement, but certainly the town has grown and has, you know, progressed quite a great deal. Especially with this, uh, professional policing campaign.
This guy's always got your six, so. Didn't I get a report from the Fire Department? You didn't get anything either, okay. All right, uh, so we'll move along to Parks and Rec, Mr. Smith.
The, uh, four is what's holding.
Uh, we will have sports, assuming, uh, which is decided. So whatever all about here in my thought, seven to July eighth, uh, football will be starting up. Um, we do have, um, half-day camps, if you will, that are also being, uh, set up right now for, uh, baseball and, uh, basketball. It will be during the day as well as often, depending on the week. So those that, uh, miss out on baseball season, so they will get some learning and you can talk some good fundamentals from the league, that we know, that we'll come together, um, before the fall season starts. Um, with us continuing to view the, uh, spring pickball and the summer pickball. We will eliminate, uh, the fall pickball league, and we will go, uh, the summer softball, so we can try and offer a new program we haven't done before. So we started, uh, getting softball gear, we've already got a few teams that are ready to go and have already turned in and are going to have that ready, so we'll do that and, uh, get that going. Um, again, I also have my condolences to Laura Hammer. Um, he helped out, uh, a lot of special owners out here, uh, volunteers and, and all of the sports that do offer. So I'd like to, I bet those are, uh, may have our comments, uh, there for Mr. Laura. Um, his, uh, visitation is tomorrow at Bayland, this is, uh, that seems to be new. You know, that one's new, noon one-thirty, uh, where is that? Um, we had a couple of field days, um, I think you're going to have, just to remember if there's others. I mean, we, uh, showed a lot of dirt out from behind field three, as well as the, uh, mud that has gone down and mixed it with some sand, and was able to make it, uh, the playing, uh, it's not as bad of a program right now with field three. Uh, improvements, and we replacing bases, some of the backstops, the fence has gotten repaired and all that. So there's a lot of work to be able to give them, uh, as much use as they're getting. And, uh, for the, uh, summer pickball, fall baseball, and, uh, softball. That's another shout out, I guess, all that.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? All right, we'll turn it over to our town clerk, tax clerk. All right. Short and sweet. And do we have anything from maintenance other than the users?
Um, so we, we, uh, uh, Ms. Randy Smith, who's our public works supervisor, is now a YouTube sensation. So, uh, we appreciate his cooperation and trying to disseminate some useful information about our solid waste programs. Feel free to disseminate that, share it in any way that you feel might be helpful. Uh, I also want to thank him for taking the time to, uh, drive up to Catalonia, um, and purchase us, uh, another, uh, backup leak machine. So we should be squared away, no issues for the fall. Uh, we have two good working, uh, machines there and, uh, no other comments at this time. We're also, we've been working with our designer on our new public works facility. As soon as we get some additional, we have some preliminary designs that we still need to make some clues to. Uh, but as soon as we have some concrete information, I'll certainly disseminate that to you for your feedback as well. See if you have any questions. I think it's important that you understand, uh, where's that your large investment's going, of course. So thank you for the cooperation, if you'd be supporting that project as well.
All right, sounds good. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, item ten, which is closed session. Uh, we do need to go into closed session, uh, to discuss, uh, Carolina Attorney Statute one-four-three-three-eighteen dot eleven. Uh, A, which is, uh, the preservation of attorney and family privilege. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn closed session. Maybe most of you will close it. All right. In discussion before we move to vote. Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And opposed? All right, adjourn closed session. So we are back in closed session and beyond the other. I said, Jesus, see, man, I've been, I've been at this since like six-thirty this morning, sorry. Uh, at a closed session, back into open session, uh, don't see any other business on the agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Say it. All right, first and second, are there any discussions before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.